All right. Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM and I'd like to call the October 13th meeting of the Town Council to order. If we could please take a moment of silence to acknowledge all of those that currently serve and have served, which has enabled each and one of every one of us, voting privileges, freedom, and our safety. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded, and I would ask our host if anyone in the audience may be recording as well?
I do not see anyone right now.
All right. Thanks, Don.
Yep.
This meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar, Pursuit to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law. Our first order of business here is, Jeannie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No, no one's signed up.
All right. Thank you.
Mike, can I just make a quick point?
Sure.
Um, it's very odd. There are no attendees. I've never had a meeting where there was zero attendees. Is there a problem with getting people in?
Uh, maybe they haven't chimed in as of yet. I haven't looked over there. I can quickly take a look and see what I see.
I have nobody.
That's just very odd.
I have no one as well. Um, maybe they're waiting for our, our public hearings or meetings. I'm not really sure. I guess we can give it a couple of minutes and check back. But other than that, under Council comments, um, I would just like to take the opportunity to mention that we do have vacancies on different, different boards and committees in town and maybe each and every one of us can reach out to people that we know that might be a good fit. Um, and our town manager evaluation committee, I did send an email out and I appreciate the responses. I can say at this time that Tom O'Connor will serve on that committee. He was an existing member. We had two vacancies. Kathy Hill and Pat Henry have both stepped up and agreed to take a position on that committee. Um, so Jeannie, when you, when you have the opportunity, maybe you can formalize that with a letter, please?
Sure.
So, um, so moving along, Mary, how about the famous Town Managers Report?
Okay. Hope I can live up to that description. I did submit a written report. I hope you had a chance. It was only given to Jeannie today, but tried to incorporate the bulk of what's been going on since we last met. And essentially, we're trying to move out of our COVID slumber by tackling some of the major projects that remain outstanding, um, that we've really been thinking a lot about and yet been unable to find the time to dedicate to some of these things. But we are working on a comprehensive capital improvement plan, the master plan, the open space plan is now ready to go. It needed a couple of additional revisions from when we last spoke. Uh, I was reading it just before this meeting started, but it's 237 pages. So I never did graduate from that Evelyn Williams class. So it's going to take me a while to get through that. We're also looking at the Employee Guidelines Handbook. Steve's going to mention later on tonight, some issues about refunding existing bonds, some new bonding, financial policy updates, et cetera. So with regard to the capital improvement plan, we're starting with the notion that we need a fixed asset list, which we do not have, or if we had at one time, it can't be located. I know in 2016, the former finance director did attempt that. Um, they checked with many of the department heads. They acknowledged and they remember receiving the request, but I think there were only two departments that answered. Uh, and then Sarah's middle child was born and that sort of captured her attention and that project sort of fell by the wayside. So that's one of the major things that we need to do in order to, at least from my point of view, of what I want the capital improvement plan to look like. Now, many of the department heads obviously are doing this work of planning on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. They know what their capital needs are and every year they'll submit a new budget. So I just want to have, I want to have the fixed assets. I want to have our real estate valued. Um, I spoke with the assessor today. We don't value town-owned properties, but for insurance purposes. So because they don't generate tax revenue, they've never been subject to an appraisal or anything like that. So Diane and I are going to work on getting a replacement cost value and adding that to the, the general sum of what the town's assets are worth so that we can make better decisions about our financial ability to borrow and what the, what the total picture looks like. So all of that's underway and it's in various stages of completion. So I don't intend to submit anything, um, until I have a better handle on the origins and the, and the content of what we want to put in this document. Moving on from that, I did sign a contract with the PVPC through Bethany Yao's efforts with the, for that master plan program. The deliverables are on a schedule that was distributed to you and the plan should be finished by June of 2021. Also recently signed a contract again through the efforts of the Council on Aging interim director, Donnell Tavella, to institute a SNAP program for outreach for supplemental nutrition needs in the community. That's a program that's federally funded through the Commonwealth, through the Department of Transitional Assistance, through the UMass Medical Center as the administrator, down to the various communities that participate. So there's a lot of paperwork associated with that, but I signed off on it and the contract provides reimbursement through those federal funds for the efforts made on a local level and the expenses that we incur will be reimbursed 45% of what we expend. But I'm told that those outreach efforts would be made anyway. So this is an opportunity to recapture some of that money. I did also forward to you the documentation that we recently received from the Mass School Building Association, which represent the first steps of that eligibility period that begins, began October 1st. That's a rather lengthy document too, but it's essentially a certification that the town assigns indicating that we will comply with all of the regulations and rules and formulate that are involved with the initial steps of the school building associations planning. Um, I also spoke with Gordon about the creation or the drafting, if you will, of people who will be on the school building committee. Uh, he's going to speak with the chair of the school committee and make some recommendations. Uh, he's indicated that I am required to be on it by virtue of the position I hold in town. And I'm not sure of, as I sit here, how many other seats are available, but certainly the deputy superintendent, Pam Blair, will be a member as, and I believe Steve Lonergan will also be asked to serve. And then we'll get some representation from the committee, uh, from the residents in the community. Uh, Christina Cooper has applied for a seat on the Board of Library Trustees. I submitted some paperwork on her behalf, uh, through the town clerk for your review. That's one of those appointments that has a 45-day, uh, look back period, I guess we'll call it. And we have made, um, significant effort at filling these vacancies. I, I have been watching some of the charter review, um, meetings through LCAT and there's been quite a bit of discussion, mostly critical, on, uh, why there's so many vacancies on these committees. But I have to say, it's not for lack of trying. It's because they're all volunteer and many of them, I think, impose obligations that people just aren't, either don't have the time to allow from their schedules, or they're just disinclined to participate at that level. So, um, we're going to place an add in the reminder as the charter calls for publication in a newspaper. We haven't done that yet, but it's, I just want you to know, it's $366 to put in a three or four-line advertisement. Um, so we've been using the website and I've been encouraging people through word of mouth. When residents call me and it turns out I knew them because we grew up together, I'll say, hey, well, if you've got an interest in recreation or in conservation, why don't you think about looking at the town's website and seeing if you're interested in, um, participating on that level? But it's, it's not easy. Uh, it's not easy to find people to volunteer. In fact, we've got, I can think of one gentleman who I think serves on four different committees in town. And that's not altogether uncommon. There's, there's many, not many, but several people who are on more than one board. So you have a core group who's vested and, uh, trying to get some additional participation is more difficult than you might think. We did update the Treasurer Collector page incident to Counselor Page's comment a few meetings ago about, um, a call, I think, that he had received from a resident about some information that was on the website that, uh, we believed to, was inaccurately represented to Counselor Page. So we've published some information about the fees for online payments on the Treasurer Collector's page. Planning Board conducted its second public hearing on the Peace Road Solar Farm Site Plan Review on September 29th. That board, board then voted as a result of that public hearing, three to one against approval of the site plan. So that decision was filed with the land court and our town clerk on or about October 6th, as was required by the court order. So it's still pending. The Finance Office, with a great assist from Paul Morissette and Carrie, um, up at the Fire Department, continue to work on reporting for our FEMA reimbursement claims for COVID expenses. As you may recall, we received $174,000 several months back, uh, by virtue of the CARES Act, but that money represented only 25% of the total submission that we made for expenses related to COVID. The FEMA claim, if you will, uh, will reimburse the town the balance of that 75%. So that's been an enormous bookkeeping undertaking. So I thank Steve and Paul and Carrie and Olga and Jennifer and everyone else who had their finger in that pie. It's not quite done yet. It's, uh, only the next phase of the reporting, but it's a, it's a pretty monumental, uh, task. Uh, we continue, as I note here in my, in my memo, to suffer some negative consequences from our ADP adventure. Steve Lonergan informed me the other day that we've received a penalty notice from the IRS and it's a five-figure amount, which is due to the fact that ADP did not turn over, so we're told, or so we believe, did not turn over our withholding taxes on a timely basis. So the IRS is looking to us and penalizing us. So we're going to try to see if ADP will make that payment or reimburse the town. And if not, we'll have to contemplate whether we want to pursue some litigation there. Our staff continue to attend these types of Zoom meetings and webinars and training sessions continuously. Um, we're still operating under the umbrella of COVID, obviously, as you all know, uh, because you're on the Zoom meeting, but, um, it's become an unfortunate way of life of, for the last six or seven months and apparently will continue to be that way for the, the next couple of months anyway. But in that vein, uh, I wanted to give some praise to LCAT and Don. I hope you're not blushing in the background there, but, um, LCAT is now hosting meetings and, as I say in the report, for 19 boards and commissions that meet bi-weekly or monthly. And in addition, LCAT through Jamie's efforts have begun live streaming some of the sports activities, which Don pointed out to me, are now obviously viewable by grandparents and extended family across the country. And they're allowing families to somehow participate, at least remotely, in the enjoyment of watching their kids participate in their favorite activity. So we think that's a great achievement and, and a very good, um, service that LCAT is providing. That department is also participating in a number of other community events. Uh, we had the third intergenerational discussion group the other day up at Pine Knoll. A special guest that day was Sue Lang, um, is the daughter of the individual that you just dedicated the, the Pine Knoll Swim School, uh, swimming place to. And she was great. She had a lot of reminiscent stories of her youth and the, um, time spent at Pine Knoll and how much, uh, she enjoyed it and her family enjoyed it. That was, she's now, well, she's now Lang. She was Sylvia at the time. Don continues to, Don is going to chair his first meeting tomorrow of this new broadband committee and it's tomorrow afternoon. So the mission there will be to make recommendations to me ultimately and to you about, uh, expansion of the, um, access to, uh, broadband throughout the town. There are some sections of town and some families within town that are, are being underserved at the moment. Um, the town clerk applied for and received a nice grant of over $6,000 to assist her office with the additional election expenses brought on by COVID. Um, that grant application was news to me when Jeannie told me she got the money. And, uh, I think it's a great example of the initiative that your department heads are taking to find ways to, uh, make fiscally responsible decisions that aid the town and assist in their respective departmental operations. So kudos to her for that. The Recreation Department also, uh, had some recent, very nice publicity about their after-school escape program that I guess was the brainchild of Jordi Emanuel. Um, these guys over there at REC are very cognizant of the needs of children in the community and I think should be highly praised for that. So this program, as I say in the report, runs five days a week from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon and it gives an opportunity for the kids to get some socialization out of their houses and be with each other. In fact, it was well-attended last week because at our intergenerational meeting in Pine Knoll, all the parents were dropping their kids off between 3:00 and 6:00. And, uh, there was a lot of activity and it was, and it was very nice. They've also planned some new activities for the fall, Halloween house decorating, Christmas house decorating. Um, and there's a paint the plow activity. Not sure how the DPW is going to work through that, but, um, it sounds like that'll be a good time for whoever wants to go paint a plow. Um, the Rotary Club participated with DPW and, and some plantings over at the perimeter of Heritage Park. Uh, some trees and plantings and flowers. It looks very nice. So we thank them for their contributions. And last but not least, um, I did receive today, uh, formal notice of the resignation of Chief DeLassio. Um, he's decided that the time is right in his life for him to, um, move on to the next phase of his life. And, uh, we discussed it. He'll be around to help out. He's offered his services to assist me with the creation of the, um, job description. The, will amend the one from 2016, but I want to take the opportunity and hopefully if Jeff is watching, this won't embarrass him. Um, but I'd like to read his letter of resignation into your record because it was very heartwarming to me. And, uh, I think you, you and the residents of East Long Meadow deserve to hear it read into the record. So before anybody says, I can't do it, I'm going to read it. Dear Mary, I'm writing to you today with a decision that I will be retiring from my position as the police chief for the town of East Long Meadow. I look back and wonder where all the years have gone. In 1981, at the age of 19, I started my public service career as a water meter reader for the Department of Public Works. In 1986, I had the honor of joining the East Long Meadow Police Department. This upcoming year, 2021, will be my 40th year working for the town. I can't thank the town of East Long Meadow enough for this journey. East Long Meadow gave me the opportunity to fulfill my dream of being a police officer while providing a living for my family. I could not have asked for a better community to grow up in and raise my family in. I'd like to start by thanking my parents who gave me love and taught me respect. To the residents of East Long Meadow, the business community, coworkers in all departments, government officials who I have interacted with, my fellow brothers and sisters in law enforcement, not only in East Long Meadow, but from all over, past and present. It has been a pleasure to get to know and work with you all. I'm truly thankful and grateful for all who've made my career a blessing. While work has been an important part of my life, so is my family. I'm looking forward to a new chapter in my life to spend time with my family, including my wife, Lisa, my wife of 34 years, Lisa, my two sons, Joseph and Jeffrey, who have supported me throughout my career. Therefore, it's my decision to make Friday, January 15th, 2021, the last day of a long and rewarding career of public service to the town of East Long Meadow. Again, I want to thank the town and its residents for a wonderful career. And in closing, a town doesn't make its people great. It's the people that make the town great. Sincerely, Chief Jeffrey D. DeLassio. So I want to thank him for, um, the assistance he gave to me in the short period that we worked together and wish him well. I mean, we'll have him for three months and hopefully beyond that. Um, he's going to assist me with the search, as I said, and, and obviously everything up to and including his last day. So just wanted you to know that he appreciates what you have done for him. And I just wanted to read that out loud for you. So that's it for me tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Jeff?
Thank you all. Um, everybody hopefully has had a chance to look at the open session meetings from our, our prior council meeting. Um, if, if there are no questions at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mike?
Yes?
I just have a question regarding Mary's report and it's just a matter of fact information. I was involved, uh, early on in that process of creating that capital asset plan. I don't know if I still have any of the documents, but other town employees that were involved in that, I don't know if you've reached out to them, were Ryan Quimby. Uh, Ryan would have received a copy of that as well. Um, and I will certainly search through my records to see if I can find anything, but he may be a better source and maybe have that information.
Yeah, I spent some time with Ryan today, Tom, on that very subject. And, um, what I want him to do is essentially consolidate the various and sundry documents that we have that are bits and pieces of prior capital plans, the evaluation criteria, so on and so forth. So he's all over that already. Uh, with Steve's help, I think between the three of us and, and with Bruce Fenney, who obviously makes the capital requests for all the buildings. Um, I think we can make some great headway in the next week or two. But thank you for that. I know, um, you've got a lot of the old material or the, you know, prior years and, um, we'll certainly tap into your resources.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom. Um, just, just to backpedal here, any other questions regarding the Managers' Report before we move into approval of minutes? Ralph?
Um, I, I just wanted to make two comments. Um, with regards to the appointment of Christina Cooper, um, absolutely loved, uh, the paperwork and all the trail. Um, the qualifications are outstanding. Um, I, I like being able to see it. Uh, awesome job with it and I, I think she will do great on the library trustees. Um, the second thing that I had was, Mary, thank you so much for following up with regards to the Treasurer Collector page. Um, I have had a chance to look at it and all, and so much easier to see and clarify. And again, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very welcome. My pleasure.
Uh, any other questions regarding the report? Okay. Uh, we'll, we'll move back to approval of those open session minutes. If I could have a motion, please?
I think that's me. Uh, I moved to approve the open session minutes of September 22nd, 2020.
Second. Uh, motion's been made by Tom O'Connor and seconded by Pat Henry. Is there any discussion at this point? Marilyn?
Yes.
No.
I wasn't sure if you had any questions on the, um, hearing and seeing, no discussion. The motion passes. This is a roll call vote. So I'll start with Don Anderson.
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Nudid.
Yes.
Thanks, Cal. Tom?
Yes.
Um, Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. We are about four or five minutes away from our first public hearing. Um, so I know how efficient we are. So how about if I, could I entertain a motion to move from 8A, our first public hearing, over to 9A under licensing matters and, and see if we can tackle that event?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that topic? Um, hearing and saying none. Again, roll call voted by Don?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, 9A, orders of the day under licensing. Uh, this, this is obviously about the COVID-19 and we're talking about an extension that Governor Baker has, uh, implemented for our outdoor dining provisions. Um, I'd like to have a motion on the floor and second it, which will enable us to open that for discussion.
Okay. I move to extend the provisions for outdoor dining to a date beyond November 1st, 2020 pursuant to the Governor's COVID-19 Order Number 50, with that date being extended to January 1st, 2021, contingent upon Planning Board's approval of the extended date.
I will second the motion for further discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, before we open the discussion. Don?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'm sorry. I thought, I, I wasn't sure if you had your hand up, but, um, motion's been made and seconded. Um, discussion. Ralph?
Um, so after looking at this, um, the extension, uh, in the motion is to January 1st and I disagree with the date. Um, I think outdoor dining at the end of December is just not feasible. Um, also looking at it, that would include, um, New Year's Eve being outside. I'm concerned with certain restaurants being close to residential districts, um, having them outside in a celebratory mode, uh, late at night. Um, I would think that middle of December, especially with the temperatures outside, would be more appropriate. If you'd like a motion, I can give you a date. Um, I would move that we amend the date to, um, December 14th, 2020.
I would support Ralph in that and second that.
Okay. Uh, motion's been made by Ralph and seconded by Tom. Further discussion on the amendment to the motion. And Pat?
I would defer to the owners of the establishments as to whether or not it's too late to eat outside or have outside dining in December. I believe that's really up to them. As far as the time, as far as the outside celebration is concerned, in December, all the windows are closed. So there's much less of an issue. Also, on New Year's Eve, almost everyone is awake until well after our 11 o'clock closing time. So I will vote for the original date.
Marilyn?
I have to agree with, with Pat on this one. Um, you know, obviously the governor made the change based on perhaps some information he received from local restaurants.
from local restaurant folks who are trying to survive in this pandemic world. And if they can figure out how to keep people warm and happy, I think that's the small thing that we can do, and I'm sure the neighbors are probably going to be okay with it for one night. So I would not agree with the change, Ralph. I'm sorry.
Don?
Yeah, I agree with Pat and Marilyn. I think it should be up to the business owners. It's going to be a function of it's, you know, the customers are not going to go out there if the weather is too cold. And plus, you're going to have small social distance holiday events and so forth with just a couple, you know, small business owners going out. So I think running it to the end, to January 1st, is certainly beneficial to the business. And we appreciate that. If these businesses are making money, so does the town of East Long Meadow. So I'd rather let the market and the weather conditions reduce the time, not actions by this council.
Thank you. Pat?
I forgot to point out also in my earlier comments that having no availability of outside would put everyone inside, which arguably is somewhat more danger COVID-wise than being outside. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ralph?
Just as an aside, I can barely hear Pat. I don't know if it's a condition of his mic or mine.
I heard him loud and clear.
He was clear.
Yeah, I heard him too.
And Ralph?
So I apologize, my screen just froze up. So no, I didn't hear half of what Pat said. He started talking and then mine went out. But not to say what Pat was saying wasn't important to me, because obviously it is. But part of my concern is, we as a council are setting this date. The governor has set that 60 days from the release of the emergency schedule. So we're the ones picking a specific date to end this outside dining. It's not the governor. So we've already chosen a date as of July or January 1st. So, I mean, listening to Don and Marilyn and Pat, if we're concerned about the restaurants and we're looking to keep, you know, and say, hey, it's up to them, then maybe we shouldn't even be setting January 1st as a date, and we should just take the governor's 60 days after the emergency order ends as the date.
Through the chair, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and I would support that as well and remove my second, as long as the initial motion got removed.
Any further discussion at this point? Ralph, would you like to amend your previous motion?
So I would actually offer a motion that we follow the governor's guidelines in regards to not setting a specific date, even though we're allowed to, and have it end 60 days after the emergency pandemic is over.
I'll still support that and second.
All right, so motion presented by Ralph and seconded by Tom. Any further discussion?
Mike, I saw Jeannie had her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Jeannie?
Yeah, through the chair. So if I'm reading the order right, I interpreted it to be up until 60 days past the November 1st date. Because his original order to extend the outdoor dining was till November 1st. So I believe this Order Number 50 is that it should remain in effect until 60 days past the end of the state of emergency or such earlier date. So I interpreted that as being you could extend it up until January 1st or earlier, past November 1st, which was the original date the outdoor premises had to end.
So Mary, your interpretation, please?
Well, I know that that was Jeannie's thought because we talked about it briefly. But as I look at the language of the order, it does say past the end of the state of emergency or such earlier date as the city or town establishes. So I think the emergency is still ongoing. It's not been declared to be over. So I think Ralph's motion would suffice. I agree with you, Jeannie. I think that's how we both read it at first, that it was 60 days past when the governor had extended the initial outdoor dining. But I think it can go, I think Ralph's suggestion is valid under the language of this. And it's on page three, if any of you have it in front of you. It's right in the middle. It's
The third paragraph.
Third paragraph, yeah.
Marilyn?
Just to comment, I'm looking at the attendees and we have someone with a hand raised, and it's Bill Collins. I'm not sure if he has a comment, if that's of interest to the council. I just wanted to make you aware of it. It's up to you, Michael, if you want to invite him in.
At this time, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'm hearing, seeing none. I would entertain a vote at this point in time, starting with Don on Ralph's amended motion.
Just to be clear, it's 60 days from the end of the the state of emergency. Not for first, so it'll be 60 days past that date, whatever.
Time, yeah, to the future, I guess.
If that's the case, the answer is yes.
Okay. I am a yes as well. Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. The amended motion. Do we need to move back to the original? Anything to do with the original motion?
Yes, we need a vote on that.
Could I have a motion for that, please?
I move that we extend the provisions for outdoor dining to end 60 days after the pandemic is over.
Okay, we have a motion by Marilyn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Marilyn and seconded by Don. Any further discussion?
The only discussion is just for clarification. So that people are clear that the pandemic being over as defined by the state removing the state of emergency.
Good point.
Yep.
Thank you, Don. So roll call vote on this, starting with Don?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you all. We are now within the timeframe where we can move back on our agenda to 8A and start our first public hearing. So our public hearing here scheduled for 6:30 tonight PM is to review the projects funded through the town's fiscal year 2018 Community Block Grant. And before I open the meeting, I believe John O'Leary will make the presentation for this public hearing. And there will be no motion to vote. It will be for informational purposes. And I believe it's a requirement for the grant that we obtained to have this public hearing. So I'm going to have to switch over here to our participants. And now we have Don, 15 attendees attending.
Yes.
Audience.
Yep, I see John. Shall I promote him?
Um, yeah, I just I can't, I clicked on my attendees. I can't see them. But for, to expedite matters, Don, if you see him in the crowd, could you please bring him in? I guess you'll convert him over to a panelist.
He's on his way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike, as an aside, even though Facebook is on a 15-second or more delay, there are 20 people currently watching us on Facebook as well.
Thank you, Don. Okay, before I introduce John, I'd like to introduce our council members. To my far left is Don Anderson. I'm Mike Kane, followed by Pat Henry, Kathy Hill, Tom O'Connor, Ralph Page, and Marilyn Richards. Jeannie, could you please read the report into the record? The legal notice?
Excuse me?
Though I was saying legal notice. I think I was cut off.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will conduct a public hearing on October 13, 2020, at 6:30 PM. The hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 13, 2020. Please visit zoom.com to join the meeting. The performance hearing will review the projects funded through the town's FY 2018 Community Development Block Grant, including the Inward Commons Roof Replacement Project, Town Hall Accessibility Planning Project, Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program, and Mobile Food Pantry Program. All persons with questions or comments regarding the performance hearing will have an opportunity to submit comments up until and through the public hearing. Please submit comments to John O'Leary at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission at joleary@pvpc.org or 413-781-6045.
Thanks, Jeannie. John, if you can hear me, thank you for joining us this evening, and we look forward to your report.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate the introduction as well as Jeannie. It's nice to see, I think, I believe I've seen most of you previously. It's nice to see you again. And for those who haven't had the opportunity, I might as well introduce myself. I'm John O'Leary. I'm a planner at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And I was assigned a program manager of the town's FY 18 CDPG grant program. So like Michael had described, as part of the grant program, we are required to conduct a performance hearing, which is an opportunity for me to update the council as well as town residents as to where we currently stand with the grant. And I just figured I'd go through each activity individually and provide you with an update regarding each one. So about 12 to 16 months ago, we received $800,000 for four different activities. As you'll see on your handout, the Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program was awarded $360,000, which would provide approximately 15 units to modify or improve the housing conditions, whether that be doing the roofing, siding, window replacement, and bringing heating systems up to code. To date, we have approximately 300,000, a little bit more than 300,000 committed. So that's great news. And those are at various stages, whether they be under construction, completed, or about to be started. So we are still trying to actively find homeowners that are looking to bring their, or improve the conditions of their homes. So if there are, or if there is anyone out there that you know, please feel free to provide them with my information, and we can get them connected with the application and begin that process. Moving on to the planning project. Well, actually, I should start by saying, are there any questions? I'll maybe ask questions at the end or each individual activity. I don't know if you feel more appropriate. Maybe I'll wait for the questions at the end. Then moving on to the planning project. So this, we hired a consultant to take a look at the overall accessibility of the town hall building and also identify a location where an elevator could be constructed. That project's been completed. I know the town does have a copy of the plan, more specifically Bruce Feeny. He would have that if anyone's looking for that copy of that plan. Then there is the Inward Commons Roof Replacement Project. There, we committed approximately $140,000 to replace roofing on eight buildings within the Inward Commons residential complex. That has been completed. And that went very smoothly. And then finally, we have a mobile food pantry program, where we had approximately $75,000 committed that hired a program coordinator, purchased a van and associated equipment with allowing the pantry that was run under the senior center to become mobile. And so to date, they've served approximately 30 people, 30 individuals of the senior center food pantry. And it's going very well. So that's where we currently stand. Most of these programs are almost complete and wrapping up. The grant should be substantially complete by the end of this year, but it may be extended if we don't get all of the housing rehabilitation assistance money spent. So I don't know if there's any questions or
At this point, what I will do, John, is I'd like to open up the questions for the public for input or answers to their questions. So if you could remain with us. I'm looking at, I'm looking, after that takes place, then the council will have an opportunity as well. And if more questions come out of that scenario, then I will give the public an opportunity as well. Right now, we have 15 attendees attending our meeting right now. And I would have to ask by a show of hands if they would, if they have any questions for you at this point in time, and then have our host allow them into the meeting. So this is for the attendees. Please raise your hand if you do have any interest in speaking during this portion of the meeting. And Don Mackey, I have to ask you, I can't see hand raises here.
Yeah, so no, I don't see anybody. Mike, if you click on the word attendees?
I did, and that's where I'm looking at the attendees and to our phone call listener.
No hands, so.
Okay, I guess sooner or later, I'm going to see a hand somewhere, so.
Yep, you will.
But this is our protocol going forward, and I'm sure it'll work well once we digest it. So
Mike?
Yes?
There's somebody in Facebook, albeit they're on a delay, and it's an Erin Smith Bailey. And her question is, what are requirements for the housing rehabilitation?
So that's a good question. So there is income guidelines associated with that, starting for an individual. If you make under $47,000, you'd be eligible to at least apply. And it goes up from there depending on how many family members you have in the household.
Thanks, John. I'm not seeing Facebook attendees, Don.
Yeah, I'm going to put the link to the Zoom so they can come in here too. I'm going to put that up on our Facebook page. Bear with me just for a moment on here. I just have to open up something. Here it is.
I can say in the future, people that wish to speak, you would be better off participating in the Zoom portion of the meeting. With the delayed timing here, we're on to something else by the time you're raising your hand. So it would work much better if you have an opportunity to want to speak to, like I said, chime in through the Zoom meeting.
Posting it right now. Okay. In a few seconds, they'll see it.
I'm sorry?
I just posted the link, so if they click on it, they can now come through our meeting.
Okay, thanks.
It's on our town page.
So any other attendees right now? Could you please raise your hand if you'd like to comment under the public segment of our meeting? And Don Mackey, are you seeing any with hands raised?
No hands.
No hands. Okay, so at this time, we'll move from public comments to council comments. Any comments from the council? And excuse me, Kathy, I could see your hand. I have numerous blocks open here, and some of them are blocking my screen from seeing you, so please be patient. But Kathy, go ahead.
I just had one question for John, and that was on the Town Hall Accessibility Project. What was the dollar amount attributed to that? I may have missed it.
Sorry, yes, that was $50,000.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, hearing, I'm sorry, Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. John, I just had one additional question having to do with the Town Hall Accessibility Planning Project. You mentioned that Bruce Feeny has the, all the documentation supporting the research that you did?
That's correct, yes, he has, with the architectural firm that performed the planning study, he has that document available.
Okay, can you answer just a generic question? Is it feasible? Can we do it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe the quote, and this was, you know, pre-COVID, but it was just shy of a million dollars. It was like around, yeah, mid $900,000.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, concerns for John? Okay. Hearing and seeing none at this time. As I stated previously, no motion or town council action is required for this matter, and the public hearing now can be closed. John, I want to thank you for your time and all the information that you provided, and best of luck going forward. We will hopefully be visiting with you down the road a bit.
Thank you, I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you, Michael, and thank you, the council members.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Bye, John. All right, we are six, I'm seeing 6:52, so our second public hearing. This public hearing is continued from September 22. So we can consider it is being opened at 6:45 it was scheduled, and it is to address the establishment of a mixed-use village district bylaw. The second of two required readings of the bylaw will occur during this public hearing as outlined in Article 2, Section 5 of the Charter. At this point, I'd like to introduce the council members again. We have Don Anderson to my left, I am Mike Kane, Pat Henry, Kathy Hill, Tom O'Connor, Ralph Page, and Marilyn Richards. I'd just like to make a brief statement that tonight's council meeting is about the creation of a bylaw that would allow a mixed-use development. A mixed-use development would be defined as a combination of residential and commercial use on the same property. But this bylaw is not for a specific project that we're discussing tonight. So it's curtailed to the bylaw only. The applicant is the planning board, and I saw Russ Denver in the audience earlier. Again, if I can change screens, I'm sure he's still there.
He is, like...
Okay. I'm dying to try this and say, could Russ raise his hand? I'd love to see.
He did. There, I'll show you. There you go, see it?
Do I have to scroll down on the screen until I find?
No, he should be at the top.
Right up, he's at the top.
I'm promoting him.
All right, there we go. Yep. Very good. Could we convert him over from attending to a panelist and invite him into our meeting, please?
There he is.
It's like magic.
The magic of Zoom.
Great. Hi, Russ.
Hello.
Hey, Russ.
We did this at our last council meeting again, and if you could please present the proposed action to the council and the viewing public.
Well, on behalf of the petitioner, the planning board, I think you've kind of laid it all out. This is the creation of a mixed-use village district. It is not for a specific project or a specific parcel. It would allow the creation of a zone where you could have residential and commercial mix. There's a great deal of flexibility with respect to this type of development. It is, it has been done in other suburban New England communities, including those in Massachusetts. There are a number of different parcels in town, which this potentially could be used on. The planning board submitted this to the, to the town council well over a year ago. I want to credit the council for creating a subcommittee to review this. I am sure that they had in excess of 15 to 20 different meetings on this. So every town councillor has been aware of this project for in excess of 18 months, and I'm sure they've all had the opportunity to review the work of the planning committee over the last 18 months. The planning board voted unanimously to forward this to the town council. And as I indicated last time, that we were kept informed of the progress of the subcommittee by either Marilyn Richards or by councillor Page, councillor Richards or councillor Page. So we thank them for that. I believe that we are in general agreement with the proposed changes to the bylaw that the town council subcommittee has recommended on this. We fully support their reasoning for such things as having a special permit, having a host agreement negotiated by the town manager, and I'm sure approved by the town council. And I think what we heard from councillor Anderson last time, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but there would be a minimum of four different approvals for a specific project on this. Two by town council, or actually, three by town council, and two by planning board. More than sufficient opportunities for the public to be involved in any process regarding the approval of any potential project under the mixed-use zone. So on behalf of the planning board, we do support it. We encourage this as a new way of doing development in town. We need to start thinking outside the box to create more opportunities, not only for younger residents of town, who may find it difficult to afford to move into town, but want to live here, and for people like myself, who are getting on in years and might want to sell their home they're in, but stay in town and have an opportunity to move into in lieu of maintaining a single-family home. So I think this type of zone is very creative. I think the town council subcommittee has done a wonderful job about adding to it and putting in safeguards that would protect the town, protect the school department. Having the host agreement really, I think, was a very smart move by the subcommittee. And it would be a smart move to have this in the committee as recommended by them, or in the bylaw recommended by them. So all I can say is, we're in favor of it. We hope it moves forward.
Thanks, Russ. Has everybody, do they have the packet in place, which would start with the definitions? And if we do, we're going to have to follow the same protocol as we did last time and have these read into the record. And Marilyn, I don't mean to pick on you, but I see papers in your hand. So I'm going to start with you and ask, could you read the definitions and page one as well into the record?
Last time, I read the wrong page first. Let me just make sure I'm doing what you're asking me to.
Bylaw on the top, definition.
Got it.
Other page number.
All right, definitions. Add to Section 8, definitions, part of our town bylaw. Townhouse: A single-family dwelling connected by one or more common walls. However, there shall be no more than six and no less than two townhouses per structure. Multifamily dwellings: A building containing at least two dwellings with separate sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. Green space: Green space is land that is partly or completely covered with grass, trees, shrubs, or other vegetation. Green space may also include parks and community gardens. Open space: Outdoor space for passive or active use. It includes, but not limited to, recreation areas, landscaping, hardscape, water features, seating areas, plazas, gazebos, sidewalks, and trails. Open space does not include parking areas or parking lot landscaping. Thoroughfare: A road or way connecting one location to another. On land, a thoroughfare may refer to anything from a multi-lane highway to a rough trail. Thoroughfares are used by a variety of traffic, such as cars on roads and highways. On water, a thoroughfare may refer to a straight, channel, or waterway. The term may also refer to access to a route distinct from the route itself. In other words, thoroughfare may refer to the legal right to use a particular way. Recreation: Recreation is an activity that people engage in during their free time, that people enjoy, and that people recognize as having socially redeeming values. Indoor self-storage: A facility that provides indoor units leased to individuals and business owners for the storage of household goods, excess supplies, and archived records, as examples. Such facilities may be climate-controlled, individually secured, and may have multiple stories with elevator access. All storage units to be accessed within the building, and no storage unit shall be used as a residence. Mixed-use village development: A development consisting of a mixture of residential, commercial, and business uses and building types, including single-family dwellings, townhouses, multifamily dwellings, with or without attached business or commercial spaces, business and commercial buildings, recreation facility, and open space. Affordable housing: Affordable housing units are units which may only be rented or purchased by eligible households whose annual incomes, adjusted for family size, do not exceed the limits for maximum annual income. For low-income households or households, 80% of the median income for East Long Meadow as calculated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or any successor agency, and are eligible and accountable for the purpose of the Commonwealth's MGL Chapter 40B Subsidized Housing Inventory, SHI, or its successor. Now, you want me to do the first page?
How about one and two, please?
You're such a good reader. I guess. My assumption, I'm starting with Section 5 Special Use Regulations, is that correct, Mike?
It is, thank you.
Okay. 5.3-B: Mixed-use village district. Mixed-use village development shall be permitted in the mixed-use village district only upon issuance of a special permit with site plan review and design review from, as specified in Sections 7.2 and 7.4 of the East Long Meadow zoning bylaw. 5.3-B-1: General description. Mixed-use village development shall mean a development consisting of a mixture of residential, commercial, and business uses and building types, including single-family dwellings, townhouses, multifamily dwellings with or without attached business or commercial spaces, business and commercial buildings, recreation facility, and open space. 5.3-B-2: Purpose. The purpose of this mixed-use village district bylaw is to allow a number of uses as outlined in Table 3-1 in a single development, and 2: A. Allow for a greater variety and flexibility in the development of housing types integrated with business and commercial uses; B. Reduce vehicle trip miles by providing services within walking distance of residential units; C. Provide additional housing with a designated percentage of affordable housing as further defined in Section 5.3-B-13 herein; and D. Promote the preservation of open space. 5.3-B-3: In a mixed-use village development, the following uses are permitted: A. Single-family dwellings; B. Townhouse; C. Section 8 definitions; C. Multifamily dwellings; C. Section 8 definitions; D. Business and commercial uses compatible with and supportive of uses as listed in the East Long Meadow Schedule of Use Regulations, Table 3-1; E. Recreational facility and open space, including community buildings. 5.3-B-4: Business and commercial uses. Commercial, business, and accessory uses within the mixed-use village district as provided in the East Long Meadow Schedule of Use Regulations, Table 3-1, shall be allowed as follows: A. Allowed uses less than 10,000 square feet may occur without restriction except for uses requiring a special permit. One single use with up to a maximum of 25,000 square feet is allowed in the project. In addition, two uses up to a maximum of 15,000 square feet each may be allowed in the project. B. Total gross floor area devoted to a commercial and business uses shall not be less than 15%, nor exceed 30% of the total gross floor area of the mixed-use development. Any phasing of a development shall include the required ratio of non-residential to residential uses. E. Signage: All signs permitted in the mixed-use village district are subject to Section 5.8 Signs as it relates to the business district East Long Meadow zoning bylaw. I'm done.
As I look around the room, Mr. Henry, would you like to read page 3 and 4 into the record?
My setup, Mike, is such that I'm hardwired into the town, and I cannot print from this location, so I do not have the material.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, how about, would you take a shot at 3 and 4, please?
5.3-B-5: Density and dimensional regulations. A. The minimum parcel size for a mixed-use village district shall be 40 acres. B. The maximum density of housing units shall be 12 per acre, based on the area of the entire development. C. Dimensions and setbacks. Refer to East Long Meadow Dimension and Density Regulations, Table 3-2. D. The maximum height of structures within a mixed-use village district shall reflect the zone and the surrounding context where the district is to be created. Such height requirements are as follows, and as further defined in Section 5.3-B-12A Development Regulations within this bylaw. 1. All residential zones, maximum height up to 35 feet. Commercial and business zones, maximum height up to 40 feet. Golf recreational zone, maximum height up to 35 feet. Industrial and industrial garden park zones, maximum height up to 50 feet. E. Building setbacks from parcel boundaries shall be: 1. Front setback, 100 feet; 2. Side setback, 50 feet; 3. Rear setback, 50 feet. F. Lot coverage: 1. Maximum 60% impervious, which includes the building structure coverage; 2. Maximum 40% building coverage; 3. Minimum 40% green space, 20%, which shall be open space. See Section 8 definitions. And G. Area of landscape buffer. Buffer areas shall be landscaped to provide a visual screening of the development. Buffer areas shall be landscaped to provide a visual screening of the development. 1. Minimum rear, twenty-five feet. 2. Minimum side, twenty-five feet. And 3. Minimum front, twenty-five feet. 5.3-B-6 Utility Requirements. All structures which require plumbing shall be connected to a public sanitary sewer and public water system. 5.3-B-7 Parking and Circulation Requirements. Parking shall be in accordance with the Town of East Long Meadow Parking specifications, East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, Section 5.6. Minimum required spaces. A. One space per bedroom. B. Four and one-half spaces per one thousand square feet of gross floor area of commercial and business uses. 3. One space per three seats for restaurants. D. The planning board may require additional visitor parking spaces beyond the one space per bedroom if deemed appropriate given the design, layout, and density of the proposed mixed-use village development. E. Reduction in parking requirements. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, any minimum required amount of parking may be reduced by the planning board if the applicant can demonstrate that the lesser amount of parking will not cause congestion, endanger public safety, or that lesser amount of parking will provide positive environmental or other benefits, taking into consideration providing that the difference between the minimum required parking and the amount requested be designated on the plan as future parking and left as green space. The planning board will consider the following. I. Shared use, actually, Roman numeral one. Shared use of off-street parking spaces serving other uses having peak user demands at different times. Number 2. Impact of the parking requirement on the physical environment of the affected lot or the adjacent lots, including reduction in green space, destruction of significant existing trees and other vegetation, destruction of existing dwelling units, or loss of pedestrian amenities along public ways. And 3. Such other factors as may be considered by the planning board. 5.3-B-8 Design Review. The Design Review Committee, or the Planning Board acting as the Design Review Committee, shall review applications for all actions that are subject to the provisions of this section and shall make recommendations to the developer prior to and within the public hearing for site plan review as to the conformance with the design standards established in Section 7.4.0 Design Review. The Planning Board shall retain overall responsibility and authority for design review approval. The Planning Board may also employ consultants to assist in design review at the expense of the applicant.
Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
Ralph?
Sure. You want me to do the next two pages?
Thank you.
5.3-B-9 Community Association. A. A community association shall be established requiring membership of each unit owner in the mixed-use village development. The association shall be responsible for the permanent maintenance of all communal water and sewage systems, common open space, recreation, recreational, and thoroughfares. An association agreement shall be submitted with the special permit site plan review application, guaranteeing continuing maintenance of such common utilities, land, facilities, and assessing each unit a share of maintenance expenses. Such agreement shall be subject to the review and approval of the town attorney and the planning board as part of the site plan review. B. Such agreement shall provide that in the event that the community association fails to maintain the common facilities in reasonable order and condition in accordance with their agreement, the town may, after notice to the association and public hearing, enter upon such land and maintain it in order to preserve the taxable values of the properties within the development and to prevent the common land from becoming a public nuisance. The association agreement shall also provide that the cost of such maintenance by the town shall be assessed against the properties within the development. 5.3-B-10 Procedures and Pre-Application Review. A. Applicants for mixed-use village development shall follow the special permit procedures specified in Section 7.2 and the site plan review procedures specified in Section 7.4 within the East Long Meadow zoning bylaws. B. Applicants are encouraged to submit a preliminary plan for review by the planning board prior to the application for a special permit. 5.3-B-11. Additional Provisions. A. All roads in the development shall meet the minimum requirements for public roads as established by the Department of Public Works. However, the planning board may grant waivers from the requirements for width of right-of-way and pavement, with the exception that sidewalks shall not be waived. B. A bus stop for regional bus, rapid transit bus, shuttle bus, and/or ride services shall be provided for public or private transport. C. Development impact study shall be provided by the developer and reviewed by the town at the developer's expense. D. A traffic study shall not be waived. E. The proposed development shall be subject to the provisions of a host community agreement, HCA, negotiated by the East Long Meadow Town Manager and approved by the East Long Meadow Town Council. This agreement shall address impact issues such as, but not limited to, traffic mitigation, affordable housing as further outlined in Section 5.3-B-13 herein, school enrollment, public safety, peer review, as some examples.
Thanks, Ralph. Mr. Anderson. Seven and eight, if you will.
5.3-B-12 Development Regulations for the Mixed-Use Village District. Development, redevelopment, and reuse will generally be deemed consistent with the purposes of the mixed-use village district when the planning board has determined that the proposed project meets the following objectives: A. In the spirit and the context of creating a mixed-use village district development, heights of new buildings shall approximate those of adjacent and existing buildings. Diverse roof styles and heights are encouraged and should complement the surrounding developed environment. Flat roof lines are to be discouraged as they are not in keeping with New England architecture. B. Mixed-use village development will be consistent with the zoning bylaws of the Town of East Long Meadow. C. The mixed-use village development will provide for quality development consistent with the character of building types, streetscapes, and other community features traditionally found within the Town of East Long Meadow. D. The mixed-use village development will have adequate water, drainage, and sewage systems or provide upgrades to existing systems for its needs and usage to satisfy Town of East Long Meadow requirements. E. The commercial and business uses of the mixed-use village development shall be planned and designed in an integrated manner to complement the residential uses and help foster vibrant, workable, livable, and attractive neighborhoods consistent with the Town of East Long Meadow's zoning bylaw and this section. F. Site development, location of buildings and structures. A lot in the mixed-use village district may contain more than one structure with a principal use. The planning board may grant approval for multiple structures on one lot only upon making a determination that the proposed development contains the correct percentage of commercial, business, and residential uses. G. Residential condominiums and townhouses shall not exceed three bedrooms. Residential apartments shall consist of a mix of one- and two-bedroom units. 5.3-B-13 Affordable Housing. Affordable housing units are units which may only be rented or purchased by eligible households whose annual incomes adjusted for family size do not exceed the limits for maximum annual income. For low-income households or households, eighty percent of the median income of East Long Meadow is calculated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development or any successor agency and are eligible and countable for the purpose of the Commonwealth's Mass. General Law, Chapter 40b subsidized housing inventory, SHI, or its successor. A. Mixed-use village district projects anticipating that one hundred residential units or greater are to be developed shall include affordable housing at a ratio of ten affordable units according to the following schedule: Market rate residential units complete percent affordable units. Residence, zero to twenty-four, zero affordable units. Twenty-five percent, ten percent affordable units. Fifty percent, fifty percent affordable units. Seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent affordable units. Ninety percent, one hundred percent affordable units. And one hundred percent, one hundred percent affordable units. B. Affordable housing units shall be integrated with the rest of the mixed-use village development as to desirability of location and access to amenities. Affordable housing units shall be comparable in design, appearance, construction, and quality of materials with other market rate units within the development. Interior features and mechanical systems of affordable units shall conform to the same specifications that apply to market rate units within the development. C. To the extent possible, local preferences, preference will be used. To the extent permitted by the Fair Housing Act, this special permit will address housing preference as it relates to municipal employees, East Long Meadow residents, and employees of East Long Meadow businesses.
Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
So, at this point of our hearing, we are going to open up the hearing to public comments. The comments will come from attendees that are attending our meeting at this point in time. I can let everyone know that there are thirteen in the audience, and if you could make sure that your comments pertain to the creation of this bylaw, that would be helpful. If you could also try to limit your comments to approximately three minutes. If everyone were to speak, you know, it would be probably utilizing all of forty minutes of this, this meeting, and I would also like to be able to have your, your questions answered. We still have a member of our planning board in the audience, and we have our, not only our council members, but members of the planning subcommittee and the chair here, so we'll do the best we can to accommodate everyone. So, how this is going to work is similar to our last public hearing. Our attendees, if you raise your hand, I will be able to see that, and you will be moved to the top of the list. At that point, our host will be able to bring you into the meeting. So, I am ready for a show of hands. So, first on the top is Jane from Fitzgerald Law Firm. Don, could you please, please bring her in?
Yep, there she is.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Jane.
How is everyone? Good. Thank you so much for letting me have the opportunity to speak. I will be brief. I just wanted to, again, you know, thank everybody and thank the subcommittee and the planning board for taking the time to draft this bylaw. As you all are probably aware, I represent a potential developer of a mixed-use project here in East Long Meadow at 330 Chestnut. And again, you know, today is not about that. Today is just about the creation of the mixed-use zone in general. But I just wanted to let you all know. I was, I did appear, or I did listen in on the last hearing as well, and there was a comment by a school committee member about the effect that a mixed-use project of at least my client's size and possibility would have on the school system. So, I took that to heart. My client took that to heart. And we did meet with Superintendent Smith and Assistant Superintendent Pam Blair today, actually, to go over some of the, the school district's concerns. And I think it was a very productive meeting. They did have questions, and we answered them. You know, most of their concerns related to the amount of schoolchildren that would be coming into the school district. We were able to provide them some confidence that due to, you know, at least with respect to my client's project, the same would be phased in. It's not like there would be, you know, sixty kids all at one time. Not that they expect that amount of kids in any event. That in the event that the amount of kids that is suspected goes over that amount, there is the protection of the host community agreement and any sort of negotiation that would be made with the town in that with respect to school enrollment. But I do think that they felt, and I'm not sure if either one of them are in attendance tonight. I do feel that they felt that there was some clarity, and they felt more comfortable with a mixed-use zone in general after our conversation, and that there is the protections there for the school as well as, you know, how the community or how the project would be developed. So, I know that concern was out there from a school committee member, and so I just wanted to let the council know that we did take that to heart, and we had, may have had that discussion. Thank you.
For the record, Jane, could you please state your full name and your address, please?
Yes. So, my name is Jane Mantuleski. I'm an attorney at Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, PC, and we're at 46 Center Square in East Long Meadow.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
I see Beth, Don, in the audience, Beth Boucher. Could we please bring her in?
She's on her way.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Beth. How are you? Could you, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Elizabeth Marcien Boucher. I'm 138 Pease Road.
Thank you.
I do appreciate John, Jane, reaching out. I have, honestly, I have not looked at my school committee email yet today. I just rolled in from work, and I just immediately got on. I'm sure Gordon would have touched base with me if the timing had been a little bit, he had a little more time to get back to me. That said, I know that in the Mayfield Apartments, right over the line in Enfield, they have about a hundred units. There's approximately six families in there right now, which even if you average about twelve, that's about twelve students per hundred units. So, yeah, we could reach that sixty-student mark very easy on just one particular development, let alone potentially three developments that could fall under this guideline that would fall within this town. So, we really do need to take that into consideration. And with all due respect to Russ, I appreciate the time and effort the board's made. I do have to disagree as far as this, I know it, you're trying to make it sound cozy and village-like, and it's an oasis, but it's not. You know, these, these, these developments, if they're at forty units regardless of where they go, per sixteen, what was it, twelve units per acre, you're looking at five hundred units of housing. There's at least three parcels that could fit that within this town. That's upwards of fifteen hundred units, and I don't even know if some of those parcels are bigger than forty acres. So, you know, fifteen hundred units of housing will most definitely impact our schools in this town. And unless these developers are willing to help us add schools, I think we need to, to take, just to step back for a moment. Now, I have a lot of things I want to say, but the one thing I did want to ask really quick before I start is, does this town have a housing production plan in order? Now?
Maybe you could, if you could complete all your questions, and then when we move to the council portion of the meeting... to the council portion of the meeting, we'll be able to answer those. If we could keep this somewhat specific to the bylaw?
Okay, so, the reason why I'm talking about the housing production plan, and if we have one, I'm sorry, but I'm just going to say what I have to say, what I'm saying is, is maybe we're jumping the gun to this particular bylaw specifically, and this is why. All right? I'm under the impression that part of the reason why the council has to propose this new mixed-use bylaw for zoning is because of developers that are approaching our town, regardless of where this particular development might be. And that, in fact, we're concerned that they might invoke the Chapter 40B of the Mass. General Law Comprehensive Permit Act, just for anybody who is out there. The 40B Comprehensive Permit Act is a Massachusetts law that allows developers of affordable housing, or even if they don't normally do affordable housing, they can become affordable housing if they choose to do it, to override certain aspects of municipal zoning bylaws and other requirements. Under Chapter 40B, in any municipality where there was less than 10% of housing qualifying as affordable, under the law, which we don't have, a developer can build more densely than the municipal zoning bylaws would permit. This would allow more units per acre of land when building a new development. If at least 25% or some cases 20 of the new units have long-term affordability restrictions. Affordable housing is an important issue, and I'm not discounting its place in our town, and I do believe that this is correlating, by the way. But to me, it seems that we're getting bullied. We are making our choices for our town based on fear. The goal of the Affordable Housing Law, Chapter 40B again, is to make at least 10% of every Massachusetts community housing stock affordable for moderate-income households or less. Our town does not meet this requirement, and it needs to be fixed, but it needs to be fixed correctly. My current understanding is that under Chapter 40B, communities can develop a housing production plan, an HPP, to avoid developers shoehorning in buildings more dense than municipal zoning bylaws allow. If a community has a Department of Housing and Community Development-approved HPP, and it has granted certification of compliance with the plan by the Community Development, Housing, Department of Housing Community Development, a decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals relative to the comprehensive permit application will be deemed consistent with local needs under MGL Chapter 40B. Consistent with local needs means the Zoning Board of Appeals' decision will be upheld by the Housing Board Appeals Committee. Do we have an HPP? If we don't, isn't the first step I'm seeking to, isn't that the first step? I'm not seeking to deter the development of affordable housing in town. I do not want major developments in this town, but I do believe that an HPP would give the town more protections against a developer. It wouldn't make us have to change how our community looks. I mean, you think of how many homes that we would need to build under affordable housing, which we need to do. You can make half of them affordable for the seniors in our town, something low like, like, you know, like some brownstone gardens, and intermixed among that, you could have single-family homes on smaller plots for, for young families coming into this town, which would affect our school system, but in a positive way, because these people would own their homes and take pride in it. So, I, I, I respect what the planning board has done. I get it, people are not, they're not showing up to these meetings, they're not giving their input, they're not seeing what's happening, and this year especially, it's just been disastrous for you guys. You're working hard, you're putting your time in, and people, it's just going right over their heads. So, I'm asking that before you vote on this, somebody in the town really take a good look at the HPP, and that we decide whether or not that is something that we should be doing first, and then if we can't do it, maybe we could vote on this. So, appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. They will be taken under advisement, and like I said, when we move to the council portion of this meeting, hopefully, somebody in the audience might be able to address that, and there are other remedies as well. I would like to give the opportunity to other attendees at this time to be able to speak. So, Don, if we could bring in George Kingston, please?
Yes, here he is.
Thank you.
He's muted.
George, you're muted.
Muted.
He's talking.
Yeah, I can see. I, I can't fix that, unfortunately.
Bottom left corner.
Yeah, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Start over.
Good evening, and could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, George Kingston, 66 Royal Lane, East Long Meadow. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I have been involved with this bylaw from the get-go, and it's been a long, strange trip, is all I can say, but I'm glad we're getting there finally. Couple of things I just want to comment on, I think the, the council committee has done an outstanding job at taking the template that the planning board provided and flushing it out and hitting all of the key points that, that really needed to be done. And I really appreciate especially their addressing the affordable housing issues, because that is a big issue in terms of the increase in units that we have and not falling behind on affordable housing. As you know, this town has an issue with affordable housing because, quite frankly, raw land is too expensive to build affordable housing on, and so this is a step forward. But I want to congratulate the, the Town Council Committee on coming up with what I think is a great bylaw, and I think this is a great move forward. There are maybe a number of parcels in town where this is applicable. 40 acres is pretty big. I think we need to think about the future and where the town is going, and I think this is a positive thing for the town. I just want to get that out of the way, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, George. I will ask any other attendees at this point in time once again to raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized and speak at our meeting tonight. I am not seeing any others at this point, or correction, we now have a taker. I'm looking at, let me see, Sid and Don who have, did they disappear? Don, are you seeing, okay, they're here.
They are.
Thank you.
Hey.
Hey.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Hi, this is Sid Starks, 28 Elm Street here in beautiful East Long Meadow, and as a member of the planning subcommittee, I want to commend the council, the planning board, and everybody that put time into this. I, I remind you to some of the speakers that this is a bylaw. Whatever project comes before the town has to go before the planning board if this bylaw is enacted, and we have, just like we put our trust in the school committee, whether many people want to or not, we have to put our trust into the planning board that they will do the right job for the betterment of East Long Meadow. So, I would encourage the council to tweak this bylaw proposal, possibly invite public comment off, on a certain site, since we can't have meetings in town hall, perhaps outside town hall. Encourage people to come, to speak, to put their information in, and then for the town council to make a responsible decision for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid. Okay. Beth Boucher would like to speak again, and in fairness to everyone else, if we could limit these conversations to three minutes, it would be appreciated. Could we please bring in Beth?
I just want to make it clear that I'm here as a town resident. I'm not here as a school committee member. I will speak my voice about the school committee, because I do not believe that until today, the school committee or a member of our school system was included in the conversation about this bylaw, and I am very aware that this is a bylaw. It's not about a specific piece of property, but we all know it is. So, again, look into the HPP, please, before you vote on this. I think it's really important, and we would not be doing our job if you didn't. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you, Beth. Don, I'm recognizing Mike Casemiro as an attendee that would like to speak, please.
Thank you, Mike, here he is.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I thought, I've been watching, tracking this for just about...
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Mike Casemiro, 5 Chatham Circle, East Long Meadow. So, I've been watching this, I've been in town for just about six years now, father of three young little boys, and part of the draw to East Long Meadow was when we moved here, we heard about this development and then other things that were possibly going to happen with the parks, and in our neighborhood, we have about 12 to 14 young families, all busy, most of us are millennials, and we've been talking, and it's a shame that more people don't join these meetings, but I just wanted to voice that there's a strong need for this, I think, in the community, and I've seen it throughout other towns in New England, whether it be West Hartford, certain parts of Connecticut, certain parts of Massachusetts, where this is really kind of become the center of the town and really kind of draws people to the town, and really, I think, helps with the overall development. So, I've been in contact with people on the board. I think that this is a great step forward, and I'm really hoping that this is, that you guys vote upon this, and that this can be the first step to kind of the new wave of, or the new future of East Long Meadow. So, just want to thank you guys all for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other attendees that are requesting to speak at this point in time. Don, do you see the same?
I see the same.
Okay, then we are going to move toward council comments right now. So, please, please bring them forward, and maybe somebody can keep in mind the question that Beth asked, and maybe do your best to respond to that when, when it's appropriate. Tom?
Mike, thank you. I just like to make this statement that I've heard a lot of folks talking, and I've listened to a number of the comments made by our residents, as well as the comments made by a number of the committees, which I was part of early on in the process. And I've also had many discussions with folks, and there's still, there was still a disconnect, and I want to make this clear, and I know it's been mentioned, and it's just, it's redundant, but we're not talking about 330 Chestnut. We're talking about a zone change. And 330 Chestnut, whether we pass this or not, is not a guarantee that this zone, if approved, will, will, the developers will use this as a first choice for such a district. As was already mentioned, there are two to three other potential lots in town where this could pop up. It could also be in all three. So, I, I'm concerned that we're taking the input, and I have input and some things I'd like to see tweaked, excuse me, that I like to take a step back and allow the opportunity to take additional input and tweak, and was already mentioned. This mixed-use district document, which I don't disagree with, I just don't particularly like a lot of the pieces of it that have not been ironed out. And personally, I think our town is at a crossroads regarding our status as a small, knit, suburban community of homes, with many lifelong residents and business owners who care about and have a stake in our community, or we risk being developed into a city with mid-rise apartment buildings dotting our landscape by very large, out-of-town developers. And in closing, I'd like to see us, again, step back and tweak the document to ensure that East Long Meadow's interest only is addressed until such time that we've all had a chance to speak on this issue, and I don't know what that date would be, but I think we need to slow down.
Thank you, Tom. Marilyn?
As a member of the community, as a member of this subcommittee, and also currently a counselor, I've been involved in the creation of this document for quite a while. Originally, we were given a document with an incredible number of apartments. I want to say we were at the 600 or the 800 level, and at that time, the ratio between housing and commercial was 90% housing, 10% commercial. There were some concerns with that bylaw. It went, you know, when it went before the council, there were lots of questions, and that's why the subcommittee was created. I'd like to find out what it is that Counselor O'Connor wants to tweak. I, you know, if there's anything specifically that you are, you know, a section, or is it, I don't know, I'm not sure where you're, where you want us to go with this. I mean, we have worked so hard in trying to include protection, should this bylaw be approved, for the residents of East Long Meadow. As Russ Denver said, or I believe it was Russ, that there was a number of, of steps that were taken with planning board approval and council approval. The host community agreement is, it's huge, it's important. We can't develop on a parcel unless the council votes to change the zone. So, you know, there may be one development in town, and the town may revisit how the bylaw is created, or, or maybe tweak the bylaw then, knowing that this worked or didn't work. But just because we have large parcels in town does not guarantee that we're going to have developers knocking at our door, because the council can say no. We can say, you know, based on the level of service that this community can provide at this moment in time, you're asking us to take another leap of faith when we're not sure about this one. So, I hear what you're saying, Tom, but I just, you know, you want us to tweak the document as a committee.
Through the chair, please, is appropriate, and not directing questions to me directly. Thank you.
Wow, I guess I've been told. I apologize, Tom, but you were the one that raised the issue, and I threw the chair...
I raised the issue of having the discussion. If we're going to have the debate, I'd love to have that with you, off-camera, in an appropriate setting.
Michael?
Thanks.
Through the chair, I apologize. I don't mean to usurp your responsibility. I was just responding to the directive of tweaking, tweaking a document. So, that being said, I guess I'm quiet for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn. And Kathy, I saw your hand up earlier?
Yes, I would echo some of the sentiments that Beth Boucher has brought forward as a private citizen, as it relates to the potential that the bylaw allows for some still potential for impact on schools, depending on the composition of the, of a developer's proposed vision for a mixed village district. I know the bylaw specifically states that the, there should be an impact study done and paid for by the developer, but I'm wondering, as a protection for, against overcrowding or overburdening our schools, should that, that language in there be more specific to put some obligation on the developer, should the, the people who would move in here, along with the school-aged children, create a burden for the town?
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. Ralph?
So, Kathy, if I can address that, what we thought when we were doing this is, and I'm going to talk to you, because you just brought up the point, the host community agreement is going to be based on that. The reason we went with a host community agreement to help with looking at...
The host community agreement is going to be based on that. The reason we went with a host community agreement to help with looking at whether it be some traffic mitigation, school mitigation, is because every single development that's going to come in front of this town, whether it's one, two, three, is going to be different. And being different, we have to have the ability to adjust accordingly and we can do that through the host community agreement. I think it's important to look at and say, how many, how many students do you think are going to be in the school? What type of effect is that going to have? I mean, that was one of our main things where we looked at and, and how do you do it? How can you put that into a bylaw that's covering multiple different scenarios? So we came up with the fact that you can't really narrow it down to the bylaw, but you can do it with the host community agreement. You can let the town manager make those decisions, see what it's going to affect and go from there. I know at the last public hearing, some of the points were brought up that the document has a lot of may's in it and shells in it. And so I actually went through and I did a word search of every place that it says may, every place that it says shell, every place that it says with, without, to try and see areas that we could possibly tighten it. And I will say, there's a couple of areas that say may that we could definitely change to shell and make it mandatory that they do a certain thing. I found two of those. I found one location where it says shell, but I think may would be more forceful. I don't have an issue going through the document and making changes to it. I think that's good no matter what, even if it's an existing bylaw. If you can improve on it, improve on it. Well, my question comes into is are these going to be submitted in so that we can look at these specific areas? Are we going to have a working session where we can talk about, you know, specific situations? When Don was reading tonight under the Affordable Housing Section B, he read the word comparable. Affordable housing units shall be comparable and designed to the our actual documents as compatible, but I would agree with him. Comparable is the better word. Those are things that I wouldn't, wouldn't have picked up on. And I'm sure each counselor will pick up on a few. I'm just curious what the process is going to be to get these all compiled back in. Would it be a working session? Would it be everyone submits some thoughts and the subcommittee recrefs it? I don't know. And that's my main question. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I came tonight with the understanding that after two, almost two years of work, multiple public hearings by the planning committee and two public hearings by this council and input over the years from counselors and others that we were going to vote tonight. So I don't know. I, I didn't, I expected it to be voting up or down. So I don't know where it comes that we can now sort of say, well, let's make additional changes. It was my understanding, this was the best deal they could put together. I want to applaud Don Anderson's committee, the planning board and the planning department for creating what has been described as the best mixed-use zoning bylaw that the best minds could create. Now, nothing is going to be perfect, but they took tons of input from all these hearings. They added new safeguards, some of which were mentioned tonight and one of which I'm surprised. One of the issues about the school system is that there will, there will not be any apartments authorized under this bylaw with three bedrooms. Apartments will be limited to two bedrooms. Condominiums and townhouses could have up to three bedrooms. But the danger of having multiple units of three bedrooms is probably much reduced and therefore the number of children would likely be reduced. So anyway, they worked, they, they worked many safeguards in, they worked for two solid years and now the final decision is before the council tonight. Or maybe it isn't. Now it appears we might not want to do that. Some counselors want to reopen the whole process by appointing yet another committee. The second guest, the experts who worked two years to develop the best bylaws in which they were capable. If we do this, I think we're acting under the assumption, we know better than they, what the bylaw should say after two years. I know I don't possess that kind of knowledge. I did have a big concern about the timing of creating a mixed-use zone. Not about the bylaw, but about the timing. I have argued that we should push off the next year to see what these results of COVID, the political turmoil and the economy might look like after we get through the election and through the worst of the, of the winter. If things are bad in the spring, there might be no need for large projects like this on a short-term basis. But postponing the decision for, to tweak doesn't solve those issues. And so that remains at the top of, those issues remain at the top of my concerns. So I am really against a redo by the council subcommittee. Thank you.
You're welcome. Don?
One of the things that I've been asking for, and I think the committee has as well, perhaps all of us, is trying to get public input. And tonight, we probably, we have had more comments and input collectively and from the public than we've had in the last two years. I asked the local, a friend of mine who works for the local newspapers, the Republican, to see if they could get a reporter to cover this. This was weeks ago. And obviously, that didn't happen. So it's been a big challenge to get comment and so forth. So what we've done for the last couple of years is basically tweak it amongst ourselves in the subcommittee. Ralph's idea of having us as an entire council, fine-tune it, I think gives some deference to the people that took the time to speak tonight and ask us questions, whether it's about, do we have an HPP and how does that play into it? And maybe that slip of the tongue I made, maybe we want to look at a couple of things, but I don't think it should go back to subcommittee. I think we should have a, a council meeting where all of us goes and looks at it and puts the thoughts, because that's really the purpose, as I see it of public hearings. A public hearing is to gather input and not just vote on it, but to actually reflect on it. Because, you know, this is a lot of work here. So having one more, not a subcommittee, council meeting to put these ideas that we've just listened to, that we've been hungering for, to have public comment. I don't think, I think that's doing the process a favor as opposed to a disservice. And I say that because I'm trying to get a vibe for this council, the council. Notwithstanding what our charter says, this, a bylaw per state law requires a supermajority. That's a five-two at best. And I think as long as we have council members with questions, we owe it to ourselves and to our constituents to have one collective meeting to kind of at least put some answers to these questions.
Thank you, Don. Kathy, did I see your hand up earlier?
You did. Thank you. Principally, my sentiments would echo what Don has said. And I would agree with him that as we take in the opinions and questions of the public, we have to have some opportunity to address that. And I would also agree, it should not go back to committee. We should work through it as a council and, and go from there.
Thanks. Pat, before you speak, or never mind, go ahead. I'll come last.
Thank, thank you, Mike. I was just under the impression that that's what this meeting was for. That at this meeting, we would discuss what we heard and if we heard new things, perhaps we might change our minds, perhaps we might offer amendments. But if we extend this to another meeting, it has to be, I believe, another public hearing. I don't know that we can extend the council deliberations without extending the public hearing, doing the rereading again. And so I came prepared to, to listen and to vote tonight. And I believe that's what the purpose of this meeting is. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I'm having a senior moment. It just escaped me. I'll pass for now.
Marilyn?
Just wanted to add a few little comments, please. The last couple of days have been crazy with the phone ringing. I think East Long Meadow is waking up or maybe the word is getting out that we are in the midst of this leap of faith with this bylaw. And I just wanted to make sure, I had one resident say to me that they were looking forward to having a project such as Blueback Square in East Long Meadow. And, you know, we've seen lots of slides, well, earlier on, we saw slides of what a potential project could look like. I really have no vision as to what would a developer would propose for East Long Meadow. I think each project will be unique based on its own, you know, team of developers. But based on being compared to Blueback Square, I just think it's important that those folks who are looking at this video, Blueback Square is 450,000 square feet of basically retail space. And they only have 48 loft apartments in their residential piece. The big piece of Blueback Square are anchor stores and large restaurants, Cheesecake Factory, all those things. East Long Meadows bylaw is just the opposite. The bulk of our bylaw features mixed use in the residential component. We're talking about apartments, townhomes, condominiums, numbers, you know, the bedrooms we've talked about, the parking, we have a lot, all kinds of limitations within this bylaw. The commercial component is a range of 15 to 30%. And depending on the market, 15% was quite honestly a push. Because prior to COVID, we learned that, you know, most, there are a lot of areas in East Long Meadow that are pretty soft when it comes to commercial development. And these mixed-use developments, as we have, as we know them, have been ones that have been in urban communities where there's rail, you know, rail access or more, just more population. So what am I saying? I think we, the bylaw is good for East Long Meadow. We certainly looked at every piece that would reflect what concerns we would have to protect our town, but also provide this new opportunity. But we're not going to have a huge commercial development because I don't think we could handle it at that location or any location for that matter in East Long Meadow. So I hope that information helps to whomever is, is listening.
Thanks, Marilyn. Kathy?
My memory came back. My question was relative to Beth Boucher's question to us is does this town have a housing production plan? I don't know the answer to that. And I'm curious to know if anybody either on screen right now or some of our more informed folks in the audience have a concrete answer to that. That could be the answer. I do see a hand up. Our planner is ready to answer, I think.
I am. Maybe that screen is blocked here. I'm sorry.
Bethany, Bethany.
Okay. Can we bring Bethany in, please?
He's coming.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah.
To answer the housing production plan question, we do not have a current housing production plan in place. What we are working on currently is a new housing chapter, which will be eventually incorporated into a new master plan. And that has similar content to a housing production plan. And the housing chapter should be completed by the end of 2020. And the master plan should be completed by the end of June 2021.
Thank you. And Bethany, for the record, could you please state your name and what, what service are you supplying capacity for the town here?
Sure. I'm Bethany Yo. I'm the East Long Meadows Planning Director.
Thank you. Do we have any other council? Oh, Ralph?
Mike, if my memory serves me right, back before I got on the planning board, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission had done an analysis of our town with regards to recommending housing and where we were with affordable housing and all. And I remember them coming in basically with a plan for us to do what I'm going to call cluster housing. It was to do multiple housing units close together with open space. And we had done a survey amongst the town, asking them if they like that or, you know, what their preference was and I'm going to stretch here. I believe it was over 80% of the residents that responded said that they didn't like that idea of cluster housing. They wanted their one-acre lots with their house and all on it. But again, as far as a housing production plan, I don't believe that classified, but I know Pioneer Valley Planning was doing something on that for us, but that was years ago. Now we're probably talking 10 years or more ago. And can I just touch base on one other thing? When we developed this, we changed the actual name of a mixed-use district to a mixed-use village district. The reason we did that was based on the fact that this was a large, more residential district rather than a commercial district. This is more something with a lot of housing and then smaller shops mixed in. You know, maybe one size of like an Armada's grocery store or something on that size, maybe a little bit bigger. This isn't like what Marilyn was suggesting, you know, Blueback Square where it's 90% commercial. That's one of the main reasons we changed the name because we feel as though a village district described it a lot better. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Any other comments from the council at this point? Hearing and seeing none. Listening to all of you and receiving numerous calls today from residents. You know, we've made this public hearing very apparent wherever we could to try to give it as much exposure as possible. We do, we have options here. I mean, our options are to vote in the affirmative, the negative or continue. And if we were to continue this public hearing, the only, I would advise us to be very conscious of the timeframe. And my opinion is that I wouldn't reconvene the subcommittee. I would take everything, anything under advisement, much as what you mentioned, Kathy, or you mentioned, Don, and try to resolve, resolve, tweak or adjust anything that would give everybody the level of comfort that they would need to, you know, push this bylaw forward. But again, if we, if we did decide to continue rather than vote in the affirmative or negative, I would be very sensitive to the amount of time that might be required within our next council meeting or, or one after, but certainly I would try to confine it to 2020 and get it done. But I'm really just trying to convey what's on our plate right here, whether, whether it's vote, take no action, continue. It's, I'm going to need a motion and a second probably to continue any further discussion and decide on what direction this council wants to move this at this point in time. Marilyn?
Okay. You know, as we read through the document again tonight, I picked up a few typos that we could take care of right now. I mean, the word change that, that Don slipped in looked like a good idea because I thought the same thing. That's an easy fix. I guess as a counselor, I need to know what I'm going to be doing before the next hearing to find as a counselor, I need to know what I'm going to be doing before the next hearing to fine-tune or tweak. As far as I'm concerned, this is a pretty good document. So if, if there is, if we're each going to go through the document and come back with suggestions at a subsequent meeting, fine. If that's not going to happen, I don't want to waste anyone's time, because the effort's been made. Maybe we should just spend a little bit more time and, and take action tonight.
Any other comments at this point? Pat?
Thank you, Mike. If we do extend the meeting, would it not be true that we would also have to have another public hearing? So it isn't just, it isn't just an extension of our, our deliberations, but it would be a formal extension of the public hearing and another reading? That's a question.
When you say extension, you mean if we were to vote to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Ralph?
So my knowledge of this is the charter requires two readings of the bylaw. Those two readings have been done. If we decide to continue this, we would continue the public hearing until such time and date as that meeting that we're discussing it. And that way there, we can discuss it. The council themselves can make any amendments on the floor to the document, just like what we would have been able to do at town meeting, take a vote on any amendments, and then vote on the whole document.
Ralph, I would just ask you, timeframe. If, if we continue this public hearing, would anybody want to make a suggested date on how quickly we can get this done?
So, Mike, I, I don't know what anyone's timeframe is or anything. I'm not sure if, I believe our next meeting isn't until... I don't want to go to next year. I mean, I don't know if you want to do something in November, or you want to wait till the, the first meeting in December. I mean, if December 8th, that should give everyone enough time to do everything. And if we met at, let's say, a five o'clock meeting to hammer out any little changes, and then at our normal meeting, vote on those to approve or disapprove. Just a thought process out there. I don't know what the other members are thinking.
And neither do I. But the information I can share with you is that I spent some time with Don Mackey today, and, and what I learned, not to get off the subject, but there are 19 other boards that require these Zoom meeting services. And I have blocked out with Don November 10th. We all know that we're, if we were to try to have a second council meeting, that, that would really throw a wrench, it could throw a wrench into the program as far as Zoom meetings, and it would certainly cause a lot of extra work while Jeannie's up against running this election that's right around the corner. So if we're talking about timeframe, to work out subtle differences and give everyone a level of comfort, and taking the residents' input, I know all of us have gotten X amount of phone calls, I would suggest no later than our next council meeting to finalize this with, with either a yes or a no vote. So that would be the date I would recommend, but I'm, I'm one of, one of the seven, so.
So.
Kathy?
So you're saying the date you'd recommend is November, Tuesday, the 10th of November?
Yes, I've heard dates of pushing it out, it's into 21. You know, I'm really trying to bring everybody here together and accomplish everything that we need to do. But I know this is a super majority vote here, and I know how much work has gone into this. And again, I want to thank everybody for the time. I started on this committee well over two years ago on Planning Matters Subcommittee. The planning board has worked on it diligently. Paperwork has gone back and forth. And, you know, I'd like to see some closure by our next scheduled council meeting, which would be scheduled for the 10th, if that date works with everyone else. I think that's ample time to work out the subtle differences that I'm hearing here tonight. Don?
Do we want a five o'clock start, or will that jump into another meeting before that and mess up the Zoom?
Well, we have charter review at 4:30 every Tuesday.
Never mind.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think Kathy, just one minute, Jeannie, I believe conversations that we've had, we have a fairly light schedule on the 10th at this point. Is that correct?
I don't see anything right now for the 10th.
Okay.
Minor thing.
I appreciate an earlier start, if that's the direction we take. But I, I would think that we would keep the agenda light for that evening. And we're not going to reconvene the subcommittee if that's the direction we, you know, that everybody agrees on. It's, it's the council taking it under advisement. You know, comments that we've all received, and, and comments from tonight's meeting to try to use the word tweak, if you will, tweak or adjust or change language, and, and try to have this finalized by our next meeting. Kathy?
My point to that is, in an effort to get our thoughts in line, I would recommend that we designate just one contact person among us to accept our input, because we can't all seven deliberate back and forth by email, because that's in violation of the open meeting law. So, for instance, Don used the word comparable and compatible is printed right now. So he would recommend in email to the point person, change it to this. And then, maybe a few days before our meeting, the council gets the document that's inclusive of all of our input, so we can see the difference. And to me, then, you have a document that includes all seven of our responses, and it'll expedite the conversation and the deliberation on November the 10th. Just trying to be efficient about that.
I, I would agree in terms of efficiency as well. Ralph?
So if it helps the council out, I would be more than willing to be the person to compile everything if no one else wants to do it. I have no issue whatsoever in putting it all together in a bullet point, based on what I receive from everyone.
Thank you for accepting that task, if that's the direction we choose to move in. Are there, Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I do have a question as to, should we make changes in this bylaw? As Kathy points out, we have a new, updated, corrected, adjusted, tweaked bylaw. Do we have any obligation to the public to read that document? Or can we adopt a bylaw that's subtly different than the bylaw that we read for the last two meetings? And I'm not certain of the answer to that, but I, it disturbs me. It would seem to me that any tweaks that we make would have to be read in somewhere. But that's just my thoughts.
Well, I'm, I'm going to let Ralph here answer that in one minute. My feeling would be that maybe we would only have to read in the amended portion of, of the bylaw, not the entire bylaw. So if we changed a shall to a may, or something like that, that we could streamline that rather than reading in all the documents. But I would, I would refer to legal counsel or somebody that would have an idea of exactly how that would need, need to be done to coincide with the process. Ralph?
Actually, Mike, I was going to say the same thing. Typically, like at town meeting, we would amend the document, and then it's only the amended portion, because the rest of the document's staying the same. So exactly what you said.
Thanks. Thank you. Yep. Is there any other council comments at this point? Hearing and seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
What time on, on, was it the 10th? What time on the 10th?
Well, we can committee that. I would say probably no earlier than 6:15, and no later than 6:30, if that helps.
We can always, we can always push back, but if we have a light agenda, 6:15 will be, we won't have to kill, oh, through the chair, Jeannie has her hand up.
Jeannie?
Yeah, I just looked at the agenda for November 10. And while it's not time-consuming, it's important. The tax classification hearing should be taking place in November 10. So that probably should be done first, before you dive into this one.
And how long do you anticipate tax classification? How, how long would you anticipate that section of the meeting would be?
I think it's generally 15 to 20 minutes, then depending on if there's any questions. But Diane's usually pretty thorough in her presentation, and she provides a lot of supporting documents.
Okay. That being said, even tonight, as, as quick as we went, we still had to come out of order to meet the, the 6:30 deadline. So I, I would recommend 6:15. Like you said, we're safe there, then we don't have to jump around any agenda and, and try to get, get it done.
Yeah. Do we want the, the tax classification at 6:15, then us at 6:20 or 6:25?
I, I would probably think that we would do tax classification first. Hopefully, that's done by 6:15 or 6:20, and we flow right into this, this public hearing.
Yeah.
Would that make sense, Jeannie?
Yes.
Tom?
Mike, with the tax classification hearing, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, someone, but that's where we set the tax rate. And since we haven't finalized the capital budget for this year, nor do we know what the state funding is going to be, how do we set a tax rate?
Well, I know in the past, it's been, you know, it's been information that's provided for us, whether we have to set a tax rate at that point in time, I'm not 100%. But, Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I, I was under the impression that the tax classification was basically the decision about whether we're going to have a split tax rate.
Right.
And I didn't, I didn't remember that we actually set the rate at that point. So...
That's what I'm saying. I don't believe we did. It's, it's a presentation made by the assessors.
Pretty cut and dry.
You know, all the pertinent information to help us decide what, what we want to do with, with that tax rate. So, Tom, does that, does that help out at all?
Yeah, it does. I just, I, I, there's a lot of moving parts, and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't overlooking that fact.
Okay. So again, it, it sounds like that we can accomplish that in approximately 15 minutes. So if, if we are, if we choose to continue, I would, I would suggest the time of 6:15.
Fair enough.
Yep.
If there are no other comments at this point, I'd entertain a motion for the direction of our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to November 10th at 6:15 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Donnie Anderson and seconded by Kathy Hill. Is there any further discussion?
I just, Mike, I just wanted to add, it is for the proposed establishment of a mixed-use village district bylaw, is what the hearing is.
Okay. And do we want to roll call vote the, to close the public hearing, and then, then we can actually, no, we're going to leave it open?
Yep.
Public hearing open, we'll continue with the vote, and then we'll, then what we will do is roll call vote to close the public hearing, if that's okay with everybody. So that being said, there is a motion on the floor.
So, so Mike, we're actually continuing the public hearing until November the 10th.
That's what I meant to say. We will roll call vote to continue the public hearing. But right now, we have a motion on the floor. So we'll roll call vote the motion that Don made that was seconded by Kathy. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Kane, I am a yes. Pat Henry?
No.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing continued to that date and time as, as specified. And I'm going to ask for a roll call to close this, continue this public hearing.
Nope.
Don't do.
We just did.
November 10th at 6:15.
It's done. Right.
We just did it.
Okay. We're good. All right. So we, we did, under orders of the day, we took care of the licensing matters. So we'll move to B1. And there are two topics under financial matters. And I would ask our host to bring in Steve Lonigan, our Director of Finance, for an explanation on this and what we're looking for.
Hey, Steve.
Hi, everyone. Hi. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Couple items I have in front of you. The first one is to take the premium, we're going out, we're hopefully going out to bond in, in the next few weeks. We had a ratings call last week. We expect a result fairly shortly. And then we're hoping to have it sold by mid-November. And a part of what came up is, we're expecting to get premium on these issuances. And we want to be able to use the premium for not only the costs, and we do usually toss at the cost of going out to bond, but also to potentially reduce what we need for the project. We can apply it towards a project if we have excess premium over the issuance costs. So that's the first item that you're voting on. The second item is refunding. We have a couple bond issuances from 2005 and 2007. And with the rates going down so low right now, we can save by refunding these bonds without extending the life of the bond, we can save roughly $195,000 over the next five, six years till they mature. So those are the two items in front of you. I'm open for any questions that anybody might have.
Ralph?
So the refunding of the bonds, that's not extending the life of the bond or anything like that? It's just basically getting a better interest rate?
Yes.
Okay.
They should be due, they should be fully paid off by the year 2027. So it's another six years, five, six years.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't extending it at all. Then my other question has to do with the bonding of the capital projects. That was capital projects from 2018, correct?
I know there's capital projects from, that would have been going out to bond last year, last fiscal year, FY, actually, two years, FY19.
FY19.
FY20, I'm sorry. I apologize. FY20. My bad.
Okay.
We, we weren't able to go out to bond last year, because we were waiting on stuff from the, for the retirement, the OPEP, the actuarial.
Okay.
So we got that now. We have the final statements, and we're able to go out to bond for those.
So do we know if the amount that we're looking to bond is still enough to cover the capital projects? I mean, obviously, it's a year later, prices go up. I, I just...
It's my understanding that it is, but I can verify it.
Tom?
Steve, in, in the past, there was mention of a number, I don't remember the exact number, of projects that were still outstanding from like 2006. Do you have any knowledge of that?
We are currently going through the town, we're going through the capital project plan that Mary spoke about earlier. And we're going through, and anything that's outstanding or has been completed, we're going to update and provide the council with the full listing of, these are what we have outstanding, what's left on them, and these are the ones that are completed.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great. Any other comments for Steve? Okay. Before we move on to part two of the financial matters, could I have a motion, motion to accept? Is this done in two parts? Are we?
It's done in two parts.
I move, I move that the town votes to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay cost of capital projects to provide that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Don. Motion's been made by Donnie Anderson and seconded by Kathy Hill. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. This is a roll call vote as well. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. Steve, you want to give us an exclamation on nine V two?
Yes, that's the refunding that we were just talking about by, with the rates dropping so much and. Basically, it's almost free money. There ever is such a thing. They, it makes sense to refund these. It's long enough out that we'll recognize some savings. It does not extend the life of the bonds. It goes to the same maturity date. But it is, it does save the town about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars over the next six years, so roughly on average about thirty-two thousand a year in interest costs.
I'll entertain a motion after, after we have a second. If there's any further discussion, we can entertain that, but could I have a motion, please?
Sure, I, I'd like to move that in order to reduce interest costs. The treasurer is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds under Massachusetts General Law. Chapter forty-four, section twenty-one A. To refund all or any portion of the remaining principal of an redemption. Premium and interest on any of the town's. Four million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar general obligation. Municipal purpose loan. Of two thousand and seven bonds dated January fifteenth, two thousand and seven. And it's three million, nine hundred and eight thousand general obligation bonds dated December first, two thousand and five. Outstanding as of the date of this vote.
That motion's been made by Tom O'Connor and seconded by Pat Henry. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Kane, yes. Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
The motion passes. Steve, thanks for all your information. We look forward to working in the near future here.
Thank you very much.
And for the savings.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Does that mean I can get a teleprompter with the savings?
For the, when they, when they join those meeting, Mike.
Okay, I got one other request while we're here. I'd like, I think at this point in time, I'd like to get a real gavel. This is. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, that, look what I'm stuck with a sledgehammer. That's what I think that's what we need to get some things done. But we'll leave it at that. Under old business, there's no old business. Under new business. We have an approval of termination and release of easement for the Jeffrey Lane Extension. I think all of you are aware, it's at the end of Saint Joseph's Drive. And just for clarification purposes. This, this is not pertaining to the town accepting the road at this time. It's pertaining to the easement portion only. Saying that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the termination.
I move we approve the termination and release of easement for Jeffrey Lane Extension. And to authorize the town manager to sign said termination and release of easement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Kane, yes. Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. Action items based off tonight's meeting, any further discussion on anything that took place this evening? I think we already, we discussed the plan going forward. We have a general idea of what our agenda is going to look like on November tenth. There is no executive session, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm happy to second it.
That motion's been made and seconded. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
I, Mike Kane, yes. Pat?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Tom speak?
I can't hear. My answer is yes.
His answer is yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned at eight thirty-six and we'll. Our next council meeting, as you all know, is scheduled for November tenth at six PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Steve.